He says, they said life is what you make it. But I'm a legend in the making. I know just what I made of. Woo. Woo. Woo hoo hoo. They said they could hear the music, but they couldn't see me. Uh, they could see them, see me and not hear the music. Let's get that right. But I could hear the music and it had me dancing. Guys, it's a beautiful evening and I am happy to be here. We all are. It is a blessing. It is a blessing. And if you are looking at us, you are blessed too. So let the church say amen. And let the church say amen. As you can see, I got the city of L A behi- this behind me. Um, real quick, Deion Johnson, always a pleasure. I'm just saying is in the building. I'm in, I'm out really in the streets. Really in my building, in my house on lockdown. They won't let me out. Yo, Kwan, Grace, you, Cherie, Mike, they won't let me out. So I called Mike. I said, Mike, I'm missing the city, but I don't miss all the hustle and bustle of the city. We've been through this, Mike. I said, Mike, I, if I were to talk to God, I'd tell him I want to be sitting in the heart of the city with all the lights, without everybody bothering me just to have some peace and quiet. And this is what Mike gave me. Then I said, I want to have guests, Mike. I want people that I love and that I respect and they respect me and that can teach me and guide me to be on my show. And guess what? He made that happen. So today, what he blessed me with is I have the beautiful, amazing attorney at law, biochemist, Yale University. I asked her and she said, yes, she stand beside me and help guide me and help guide us into understanding the things that are going on with this country, with this world and with Cove 19. And anything else we wanted to discuss. And that was, and she would stand by my side through it all. So that's saying a lot because I'm a little crazy. So we have Cherie Annika Valley Cole. The credits will show that she stepped in to be a part of the team of the IJS Nation and family. What have you done, girl? What have you done? So then I have, I have my em- my MC, my big homie, Kwan. So he could reach out to the young people, tell them what's going on new, what's going on in sports. Even though some things have stopped, Kwan tells me wrestling is still going on. We're gonna talk about that. Kwan's gonna tell us about all the latest. Uh, we lost a great legend. You know what I mean? And so Kwan, we're gonna talk about that. And then the ones, the one thing I think about now is like, I tell Cherie, if I want to pick my size of the corn, I want her on my side every time. There's another lady that I had the pleasure of meeting. I had no idea that we would get close so quick because she was a guest running for District 10. Um, City Council. And I had all of the candidates on. But there was something about this young lady that stood out and it still stands out to me. Now, there are two things I've come to find out that maybe the reason this happened. And then again, it could just be fate. But after she, I can say it now, after she left my show, I made a silent prediction with me and my show manager, Michelle King. And I said, she, there will be a runoff and she's gonna be the candidate running with, against him in the runoff. And I really made that and I think I imposed that to her. She'll validate that. And that's the, and, and then the other thing is, I found out later on my son's birthday, my twins, that she and my twins, um, my souls share the same birthday. So that just blew my mind. So we are talking about the wonderful, amazing, you go, girl, Grace you. And I mean it. And I picked up the phone again and, and I reached out and we sent out a letter and her team right away responded like, yes, she would be happy. Grace, we're gonna walk with you all the way through this, my sister.
We know people want that change. They don't want.
Absolutely.
Do you feel it?
Someone who wants to do the job and help the people, right? Government for the people.
By the people. I love it.
And with the people. Because it's like they were saying, Amy Corbin Shaw, when she gave that statement, she said, did you know him? I said, no, I didn't know, but he knew you, he knew, you know what I mean? And she knows you. So she's, she's ready and she's not. Before COVID 19, she was knocking on every door. I know I went out and I called for her and everything and I enjoyed it too, Grace. I really did. She took me back to my roots, girl.
Thank you. We're gonna have a lot more people making those calls to their friends and neighbors. Yes.
Great. Now let me ask you something because my, my team is ready. Annika and Kwan, they're ready for it. They're ready. They got good questions. First, we all know we want to celebrate the fact that she is going to be in the runoff. You know, that, that, that she won.
Absolutely.
Yes, she won. I was at, and we were there at the party. I was there with you. I had a great, great food. Had a great time. I had to throw the food out there because it was amazing. But.
Can I tell you with Asians, you gotta have good food.
Well, we believe in food. I don't know a culture that doesn't celebrate food.
That, that's African American, Asian. You know what I mean?
It has to be good.
It was on point. I didn't even want to leave and I did, I was like Wendy Williams. I left with a goodie bag. But the thing is, the celebration was warm and beautiful and fun and, and, and it happened. And to be there in that moment after I had quietly predicted it. Um, like I said, to my show manager, then had said something to Grace about it and everything. And then I'm gonna tell you something, Grace. I, well, I do it. I had your shirt. I was gonna wear your shirt today. Cause I had it, you know, and my wife was like, corny. And I was like, no, it's not. I was gonna wear your shirt, you know, because I have one. I have the T-shirt. And I was like, I want to wear the T-shirt. And then I said, and then I said, you know what? No, I'm gonna be, this is gonna be okay. We're gonna get through this and I will be there with her to stomp. And that, that shirt will be right there on, on, on me. That, that is my belief and I, I stand by that. Now Grace, how did it feel for you when you realized that you were in the runoff?
I was grateful because the years of preparation uh, gave us the result that we wanted, the runoff. Um, and I just felt so thankful to my volunteers and my donors for walking with me and making this possible. We had some wonderful young college students coming in, people that I just met at the grocery store. Brenda is this young woman I met. She's a Air Force Reserve. And literally we were at the supermarket aisles and she was looking at some item and I said, oh, by the way, do you live in the district? I'm running for City Council. She goes, no, I don't, but I'll come. I'm like, would you come and volunteer? And she said, yes, there was her, her brother and a friend, three of them, and she came out to volunteer. So.
Wow.
That was on a Sunday and you know, we make things happen. We just ask.
You had a school teacher.
That's right.
You had a school teacher that was there. He was amazing. But what was amazing was this guy, when I got there and I got there toward the evening, he had been calling since early that morning. And I mean, he was punching it. He was punching it. I, I was sitting there saying, man, if I was on the other end of the phone, she'd get my vote.
Yes, that is David Ta. I've known this young man since he was a teenager, hanging out with the wrong crowd, if you know what I mean?
Yes.
And he, and he's a not so young man anymore since he's, uh, gosh, he's over 40. Uh, but his brother is someone who went in and served not 13 years in prison.
Wow.
So let me tell you, he is a man who has struggled uh, with all sorts of issues. And yet he made it out. Amazing teacher beloved at his high school.
Wow.
Someone who really gives back to his students and then some.
I, I saw working with a student.
For, for teachers, always have, always will. Teachers, nurses, not so much doctors, but you know.
Yeah. You know what, Cherie?
I have a bunch of doctor friends there, yes.
Cherie's a, Cherie wears a lot of hats. I'm telling you, and they're great hats to wear. Attorney like you, Grace, and she does wear that hat. Uh, medical field, that's why I brought her on. I wanted to be able to give my people, every, when I say my people, let's get this understood. My people, that's why I call it when we give out awards. I got an award I'm gonna give out today. And it's called the IJ- IGS Award. We call it the IGS Nation. All the fans that are coming on, Ricky, I see you. Lisa, I see you. Barbara Walls, hey, Arkansas, Madison, Arkansas, where I was born. But listen, uh, that means I'm about this, this, I keep telling you this, a world healing, a, a world gathering. So I'm for every, I'm for one race. One, human. Human, humanity at its best, humanity at its strongest. So, but we're gonna be giving out that award. We have an IGS call out for, you know, we're gonna call out some states that are not doing what they need to do with the Cove 19. So my point is, Grace, you are now a part of my heart, my soul, my team, IGS Nation. So when you win this, yes, I'm gonna be calling you to, doing everything, reaching out and still making sure that you continue to shine. Uh, but I want Annika to be able to come, to reach out right now. I'm, I'm switching names. She is Cherie Annika. But you know, I say Cherie sometimes, I say Annika sometimes, but I can do that. But I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Attorney Cole tell you what she would rather, you know, you call. You guys ain't got it like me, see. I'm not gonna go before in court. You know, and, and it's thing, her and Grace, I can, when they say Attorney, I, I slide back. Okay, cool. Like I'm good. I'm good. I got it down. But I know that, uh, Ms. Cole has some questions for Grace. And Grace may even want to conversate back with, 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 that's what we're about, with Ms. Cole, to help all of the people that are, guys, there are people on. If you can see them, I don't know, I can see them and we, and everything, and we're gonna be going back. So we're gonna give the people some good information today. Okay? So first, Cherie, I'm gonna let you ask uh, Grace a few questions. Then we're gonna get in and delve in about, um, I want to make sure we talk about the census. I want to make sure we talk about the election. I'm telling you guys, because you guys, we are all the leaders in this, this right now. My, my show is a team show. It's not a I, it's a we. So we are gonna educate some people today on some things. We're gonna have a little fun, but we're gonna make sure they leave with something. For me, I got two beautiful minds and beautiful hearts right in front of me. And these people need to know some things about you guys. Okay? So, and I know that you're ready, uh, Ms. Cole, Mrs. Cole, to ask her some question. You're excited about her being here and you guys are.
I'm so excited.
Yes. So make, make sure these questions help everybody out here. And I know you're gonna do that. And I know that Grace is ready. Grace is a warrior. She's a warrior. That, that's another.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, she, I, I've been around her. I've been around her in action. I was blessed, like I said, to work with, I, I, you know, to go up, be there. And when she came in, she came in like a leader. She, she walked in like a leader. I felt sorry if I'm gonna say this unless Cherie take over. I felt sorry for your brother. Because she, she was giving orders and he was just like, he was, I didn't even think, didn't realize he was the big brother.
Yeah.
So I was like, she is a true leader. You have to see Grace because she's not this big, tall, big woman at all. You know what I mean? Um, she's just this la- this young lady that is a force. That's the, and, and to be reckoned with. And then I have Cherie, when she's on, I have to check myself because she'll be talking and it's like, and that judge, you know, you, you ready? Cause that judge come out, you know, or that attorney. So I, I, I get it, get it both ways. And to be, um, in you guys' presence and able to walk with you in any way and every way has been my blessing. And I've been blessed by God to have that. And that is not a lie. It's reality and I'm so thankful and grateful. So Cherie Valley, Mrs. Cole, what do you want to talk to Grace you about? She's right here with you.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you for coming on to talk to our viewers and our listeners. And my first question is, Grace, what are you gonna do that's different than what has been done in CD 10? I want to know because I used to live on West Adams and that is a great part of the city of L A. And they deserve a great champion. So tell us what your thoughts are as you think about stepping into these shoes and dealing with the issues that confront CD 10 and the city of L A as we move forward in 2020.
Well, thank you for the very warm welcome. And I would say I'm gonna go in and bring in fairness, transparency, government accountability. Those things that have been so lacking. And we know this is true because the FBI investigations and the guilty plea by former council member Mitch Englander, the current FBI investigation that is ongoing on Councilman Huesar, Jose Huesar, the ongoing investigation into the city attorney's office and the.
Yes.
D W P tells us that there is a lack of government accountability and transparency. And I got to see it firsthand uh, during redistricting when they were doing a dog and pony show. Hey, I understand. Politics is politics. You don't get everything that you want. Not everything is about fairness. But don't try to scam all the people.
Well, listen, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, so sorry, finish. Cause I, I, I want to make sure that we're talking about District 10, which is amazing because we're all in California. Grace and, and, and Cherie, what I also want you guys to do is make this uni- make this universal. Because there are people that are in smaller towns, you know what I mean? Smaller cities in other states that don't realize how important you, your positions are that you're running for. Some of them have a, a mayor, city council members, but they don't have a safe park. You understand what I'm trying to tell you? They don't have anything going good for the young kids when this is over, before this happened, for the young kids, some place for the young kids to go and, and flourish. You understand what I mean? They don't even know what the mayor does with the money, what the governors, I mean, the mayor, the city council. You know, they don't even know, especially in the real small town. And then in these other cities, make these people understand why your seats, that's why I brought it on and brought Grace, why I brought District 10 on. I'm an L A native now, but I'm from the South and we have, you know, even near Louisiana, Alabama. They have smaller towns that have city council, that have mayors and stuff.
So let's talk about small towns in the South and the prejudiced, racist uh, laws in the books. And the way that laws are carried out against people of color, right? If you are black in the state of New Jersey, driving the New Jersey Turnpike, it's something like 90% of the people who get pulled over for speeding are black at one time. I hope that things have changed. When I was in law school, that was the norm and that was back in the nineties.
Wow.
How terrifying, how awful that the laws don't protect the people, the laws are not doled out equally to people. And then we have laws on the books for renters, people who pay rent. I'm hearing in, in my district, in District 10, that there are areas where if you're late with the rent, you don't get a, you know, a 30 or $50 penalty. You get a $200 penalty for being late.
Wow.
And when your rent.
That seems excessive. That seems.
I think so too. The city should not allow that because these are some of our poorest people having to pay those rents. That is wrong. We've got to protect people. When your rent is 1,600 and you're a day late and it's costing $200, there's something wrong.
Mm hmm. Without a doubt.
Right. You're wanting people to become homeless. You want to evict people. That's what I'm hearing from that.
Right.
So, you know, it, it's funny, if you have money in the bank and you're a good uh, account, as the bankers like to call you, you get fees waived, right? But if you're struggling and you don't have the money, then you have to pay $39 for a bounced check. And it wasn't even your fault. The check that you put into your account, it bounced, causing you to bounce, right? So this is where I say things are so unfair.
Mm hmm.
And I'd love to bring things where things are fair. Um, and what I'm working on right now because of COVID 19 is trying to figure out ways in which we can save the city and the county money. Uh, you read about the fact that they were able to get test kits from South Korea, but it was costing $62.50. They bought 20,000 kits at paying 1.25 million dollars. And that comes down to $62.50 a kit.
Wow.
Wow.
Which is really very high. I went and I got an equally reputable, there are four different ones in South Korea right now. And one of the four that I called and reached out to was saying, we'll give it to you at $20 a kit.
Are you serious?
Yes, yes. I even went and let the local government know. It's been more than 10 days. They haven't gotten back to me. And that makes me sad.
Wow.
I think we need to spend the tax dollars that we have frugally, right? I grew up as an immigrant kid whose parents were like warehouse worker and city employee. We didn't have a lot of money. You know, I was on reduced lunch. But my brother went into military, uh, and that paid for his college. I was the fortunate little sister who benefited because my parents didn't pay for my brother's college. He's five years older than me. I got to go to Europe that summer for an amazing, amazing trip that I would have never been able to go, but for my brother joining the military. Wow, right? So I'm a lucky, lucky woman. I'm 49 and I know what it means to not have things. I don't own a house. I don't own a car. The only thing I own are my shoes and my wardrobe. So I get it, but I'm still more fortunate than most. I do have a law degree. And if money was the object of my uh, desires, I could go make that, tons of it. But my desire is to help people and set policies that will help the people. I grew up in church. Taking care of orphans and widows is a blessing and an honor. So it's not a surprise that I ended up being an attorney uh, at children's court, representing kids who needed help. Right? So that's me. I'm all about the folks who can't take care of themselves. That is what an attorney is, someone who's able to help their clients. And I'm just taking it to another level because I want to have the right policies in place where every community is cr- uh, treated with respect and given the city services that are due us, right? Not just the fancier neighborhoods, but every neighborhood should have streets clean and the lights on. I was told that because I came on and talked about the fact that there are lights missing on Coliseum, all of a su- sudden that neighborhood got lights. So they're listening, hey, we need better lighting.
It's working. Your message is being heard. That's great.
It certainly is.
So tell me, when you take that seat, because I'm very confident in what I'm hearing, you're very strong. When you take that seat and you think about efficiency, transparency and fairness, which I believe are some of the virtues that you want to emulate, what can we see you doing differently that maybe some are not doing now?
Oh, well, starting with uh, 311, when you call 311 and you need some sort of city service, I want everybody to see the queue. That means, you know, whether it's Ms. Cole or Mr. Chandler, whoever it is, and you've gone in line, we all know. And so I was third in line. It would be wrong if I went to the front of the line, right, Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Mm hmm. That would be wrong, but that is what happens in this city. If you're a friend of someone who knows somebody, all of a sudden you're at the top of the line. And that is not right. That is not our American way. Uh, I believe in democracy and I believe that we need to make everyone understand what's going on and that we really value and respect people. And if we did, then we would put our money where our mouth is. Uh, we talk about the fact that we don't have enough jobs. Well, if we have the need for sidewalk repairs, pothole repairs, and we know we have tons of that, lack of lighting, the lack of trees being planted and nurtured so that they can stand. Well, that means we've got jobs in the making, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
It seems like, uh, it seems like COVID 19 has made things possible that have previously been impossible. Can you talk, to talk about your thoughts with respect to the homeless community?
Exactly.
You read my mind, Cherie.
You're right.
And also, and also, also added to your homeless question, Cherie, can you also even talk about the fact of what's already been done for the homeless and how there's been a fight within?
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, so let's start with the count itself. You know, I've been part of the camp for the last five years, but can I tell you, the counting is not accurate. Right? That probably, those of us who've been involved in this know, volunteers go out and count, but then the LASHA, Los Angeles Homeless Services Agency, what they do is they multiply with a co-factor that is inconsistent. One year you multiply it by 1.7 to get the total numbers. And the next year, since your numbers were high, you multiply it by 1.6. Shocking. You would think that they would keep it at 1.7 all the way. You can't change what you multiply a number by to get a number that's lower to pretend your stats are better than they are. We've also spent hundreds and thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to house a person who's formerly homeless. Absolutely ridiculous how much money we are wasting. Not everybody needs to live in a 550 square foot apartment unit. We can do tiny homes. We can do prefabricated homes so that they are more cost effective. But the city is spending $700,000 a unit to build in, in my district, in CD 10.
Wow. What are they building? What are they building for that?
Uh, not a very pretty, but just a regular looking apartment complex. And they're usually building like 40 units. So that means 40 units times 700,000, $28 million to build 40 units. Outrageous.
That's crazy. That's beyond outrageous. That, that is, you call it like you see it. That, that is crazy. So I'm curious to know though, what Grace, do you think about this stimulus bill that, um, they've put together?
I'm glad that they put out a stimulus bill. I'm not surprised that they are taking care of our billionaires. I mean, it's not just the millionaires, but the billionaires are getting tax write-offs. I say socialism is working for the upper class, not the very bottom where we really need help.
Right.
But when corporations get handouts before the people do, the idea is, well, we have to save the businesses so that the people will be employed. And I'm like thinking, no, the people have already been unemployed. We've got more than 6.6 million uh, people who have signed up for unemployment. I think it's like 6.5.
6.6, 6.6 million. You're, you're right on, girl. I'm not wrong with you.
She's completely accurate and it's.
She's completely on it.
When we have 6.6 million unemployed people, those are the people who apply for unemployment insurance. There are more.
Yes.
There are more unemployed people and they need help now. And you know what? Those lines are so long. When you call in, you get hung up on. You, the web crashes. We're not capable of handling this as a government. And yet they're not able to get the people who need the dollars now money. And they're saying what? Three months if we're lucky?
What, three months?
Yeah. The, the one point, uh, $1,200 that's supposed to come to each person. Um, and $500 per child or $600 per child is not gonna make it in three weeks. Like they were talking about, we're not even sure if it's gonna make it in three months. And they are talking at the one time deal. I'm like thinking, no, this is gone for months already. You guys, one time is not enough.
So are they trying not to, because see, I read, um, and sometimes you have to watch what you read, but I did read just like in Canada, they were saying they were giving, and I want you to tell me if it's true, they say we're giving $8,000, breaking down four payments for four months of $2,000 to their citizens. In Denmark, they were doing 85% of what they were making um, for their salary due to COVID 19. So if this is true, and I'm just quoting what I read, you know what I mean? And everything, but if this is true, because it was talking about us, uh, America itself, then why are we so, the, the government so selfish? Selfish is the word. Let's call it. It's, it's not, it's behind, but you know. Selfish is the word, let's call it, it's, it's not, it's behind, but you know, okay, my thought, Michael, I need you right now. Um, and I went into pharmacy, I went to the pharmacy, I have to watch what I say, but I don't wanna watch what I say because who knows where we're headed and I won't, uh, fear is something I was not taught, I wasn't built that way, I was built to speak out. So I went to the pharmacy yesterday, I had to go in, I had to go. And going in, everyone knows me because I'm pre-existing, we are all, uh, uh, friends and everything, and we know each other. So I went in to, um, to get my medication. And there are these big tables that, that are making it six feet away from your pharmacist. Then they have these machines and they have all this stuff and, and have, uh, someone come out every so many minutes. And my, my, uh, across, I'm looking at a, a smart and fine, there's a line with people with masks on all the way down the street. Um, there's a line at, at, at Panda Inn, now I'm feeling like I'm in the Twilight Zone or something. And then I'm in scared, like God, I gotta get this medicine and I have to go in right now because they, they sent me a new card and I gotta take it in. I'm like, and I gotta, you know, uh, just, I gotta go. So I go in and then when I, I decide, you know what, I'm not gonna let this get me down. I was getting into that depression state, like sad, like worried that I might get sick and all this, and so when I do that, I go to my comedic state. So I go in and I'm waiting and I'm talking to Jenny, one of the clerks, and we're, we're, we're fixing my insurance and we're doing my medication. And there's a, there's a simple pen that's sitting there. And she says, I need you, Ms. Johnson, to, I'm sorry, but I need you to sign this. I look down at the pen and I don't know who's touched the pen, what's went on. And I look at the pen, and I look at her, and I look at the pen, and I look at her. And, and all of a sudden, the other young lady starts laughing, she said, I know, I know, so she comes around with the wipes and wipes the pen down. And I look around, there's a line behind me of all races. And before I knew it, I said, are you guys happy you got what you wanted? This is what you wanted, you get what I mean, seriously? I said, you had Barack Obama's president, America fought back, we had a backlash. This is what we had, and we got this. He wanted to make America great again, well, damn it, look how great America is. I can't shake your hand, I can't hug you, I can't pick up something if you fall, I can't pick you up if you fall. I can't catch your baby if she's running out into the street, I can't even look at you and I can't take a damn pen and sign for my medication. Are you guys happy? And I'm laughing and they laughing, and then I'm faking it like I'm reaching, I'm like, reaching hard, even harder, and I said, I'm like, damn, back hurting. You know what I mean? Cause I can't even get the, the bag with my medicine in, I said, are you, are you happy, America? Are you happy? This is what great again is? So my thought, Mike, is, right now, we thinking about, let's think about something fun, there's one place I wish I could be right now, right now. It's spring break for my grandkids, and that one place is Disneyland. You know what I mean? And so my thought bubble is, honestly, my thought bubble is like, I'm going back to Obama's time. And I'm thinking about Disneyland. And I'm going back there, you know, and if you guys could see, it's just packed and filled with people that are so joyous and happy and I remember last time I was there with my grandson and I'm in a small world, just as happy as he was, just a kid at heart. And then I look at Disneyland, I think about Disneyland today, now this is twenty, probably, let's say twenty, let's say twenty fifteen, April fourth. Okay, when we knew we had Barack Obama's president. Now, if I were to look at Disneyland today, twenty twenty, on this day, how in the hell does Disneyland look right now?
Empty.
Huh? How's it look? And, 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 and how in the hell did we get here? How did we get here? How? And, 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 and you tell me, because I've never been wanting to place blame, I've raised my children, every, you know, I mean, these kids around me to take responsibility. And to own what you do. So Grace, A- Annika, I can ask both of you, cause you're certified to answer this question. I have people saying that they, they don't, they, they, there's so much information on Facebook, YouTube, everywhere, they losing their mind, they want people that don't know nothing to stop talking and do this and that, all of us at our field. But I know that you have a degree, you know what I mean, in biochemistry. I know that you went to Yale, I know you have, I'd rather have your facts, hell, I'd rather have my ten-year-old granddaughter's facts than Donald Trump. Y'all made me say the damn name, see what I'm saying, I'm trying not to curse, but what I'm saying is Grace, you're an attorney. You guys are attorneys, you've been to law school, you studied the law. Is there anybody that's gonna answer for this? Because we have, uh, I have family and friends in Louisiana. And they had a Mardi Gras that could have been stopped if someone had said something. Um, I'll call out in, in a minute, uh, Mike and I are gonna do a call out. And this is, uh, we do the call out and we wanted it to be funny, cause so many young black men and women have been mistreated by the police. And, 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 and by, um, the system. Until now, I'm calling out a lot of these congressmen and, and governors and stuff that think they are upright. Let them see what it feels like to have the light shine on you, the police light on you and the, and the sirens on you throwing up against the car for a minute. Because we still got states that have not declared, you know, that, that, that we are on lockdown. And every state is a Republican state, Grace, you go first, what do you think?
I think these governors are afraid to get on the back.
Leave it up there, Mike.
And because of that, they're not willing to protect the people. They're more concerned about their political, uh, careers than they are about the lives of their people. And I think that is a shame. Cause early on, you, you have the Center for Disease Control saying, don't use masks. Well, you know, the only reason they didn't want us to use masks is because we didn't have enough. It isn't that masks aren't helpful, everybody knows masks are helpful, cause that's, whenever someone's sick in the hospital, you, the visitor would have to put on a mask, right?
Right, they have them in there, I've had them. Grace, I want you and, 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 and Cherie to help me call out Arkansas. Because, yes, I'm calling it out and I'm born and raised in Arkansas, help me call out Iowa, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, South Carolina, Utah, Wyoming. Now, these are all states that have Republican, Republican governors. Now, so, this was the last time I researched it, was for the third of April, today is just the fifth. So have y'all heard any of them come on the news to call out and, 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 you, you know what happened in Georgia, you both of you do. And I didn't see a change till Rachel Maddow put them on blast. And then it came out, so, oh, we found out that it can be spread it, oh, wow! And my granddaughter says, Grandma, you, you wearing your mask, right? You staying in? And stay away from Chipotle, cause she knows that's my favorite place to eat, but just stay in, so when a kid knows. My grandson is six, when a kid knows, I can't hug anybody, you know what I mean? Why, why? Is, is this, is this a poor people's thing, uh, Cherie? And then Grace, I want you to ask, because I'm starting to think of, because in these states, these people, there's so much poverty and we, I know this, I grew up there. I was raised to leave, to have a better life.
Also, have y'all been there as well? Is it that these states don't take this seriously because they were not as affected as New York, Washington, California, Texas?
Not yet. I, I, I think that's, that's really what my perspective is, I, I, I think there's also been a call for a national lockdown.
Okay.
And I, and I think that is appropriate. Um, I understand that our elected has declined, um, citing, well, those states have not been impacted as greatly, and he wanted to leave it up to each governor to make that decision. But at some point, I do think this is something that on a national level, we want to, um, consider issuing, and it may be appropriate. Um, I also wanted to talk or just raise the issue of this national stockpile. Um, and how it was depleted and who actually has ownership and control of that. Remember that COVID nineteen is not a, uh, a partisan or a political disease. It is one that infects all of us, um, and is causing, we're currently on the upswing here in LA. And while we've been, uh, congratulated for flattening our curve, I believe yesterday is probably one of the deadliest days in our county that has been on record with respect to COVID nineteen.
Yes.
And we are now entering, by the way, the most dangerous two weeks here in the city of LA. Where I would encourage everyone to wash their hands, everyone now wear a mask. Uh, Grace is correct, there has been a lack of surgical masks and other more proficient masks. Remember, this is a viral infection that we're talking about that is so small, that is probably naked to the, to the eye. And therefore, we do need to take active steps to protect ourselves, those who may already be afflicted. Those who are like myself, who may be more vulnerable because they have pre-existing conditions that include diabetes, heart disease, lung disease. Or any compromised immune system. We are at a point where we are gonna see our numbers skyrocketing in terms of afflicted as well as deaths. However, I just wanted to point out that Grace is right. And Grace is right because my neighbor just offered to sell me an N ninety-five mask, uh, at, at a, at a back rack, bottom right. And I think that's ridiculous that I can get N ninety-five mask for my family. But my father, who is an ER doctor, or my brother, who is a pulmonologist, can't get N ninety-five mask in his hospital. So there is an issue here, I think it starts from the top. Um, and I think it's going to infect all, unfortunately, impact all of us, and that is we need to demand what Grace started our show with, which was fairness, transparency. Equality. I believe those were some of the virtues that she is putting for, because we also need competence. We need people who are competent in these areas to be leading the charge. And right now, we have a fear, some fear. I'm not sure that we have all the great minds on the table at all times. And unfortunately, that is going to be the cost that we have made for our decision in two thousand sixteen.
Well, that is our Achilles heel, that is our problem, it's gonna, and Grace, I'm not gonna put you on blast and make you say anything wrong, because I want you to be, you know, sometimes people tend to hold things against people, so we're not gonna go there. But I would say this, let's say we had the blessing of you being our president of the United States, just, just a thought. What, this is a great question, and y'all, I can see you smiling. I'm just asking you, Madam President, what would you have done differently?
Oh, everybody is on lockdown. And that's as simple as that, every state, we are all safer at home.
Even, and look, we even would pull in the cats on the street, wouldn't we, bring, get somebody to put them, I'm being real, stray dogs, everything.
No, we need to. This is a very scary, scary virus going out. And infecting anybody and everybody regardless of color, regardless of wealth, you know, you cannot be protected. But just like our healthcare, which is wrong in the United States, only people with money, sort of like our legal system. You get better justice when you have money, when you can hire attorneys, uh, or dozens of attorneys to work on your matter versus one.
Yes.
You know, money, money talks. It lets you walk.
And, and it does, and, 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 and.
And that is reality.
And you're right, it helps.
Make it as fair as possible.
How, Grace, how?
Well, let me ask.
When you have the right.
Let us think, let us think, I wanna hear this one.
When you have the right people in office who care to do the right thing, you know, the city kept saying, we can't, we don't, in regards to homeless. All of a sudden, pandemic comes on and what do you know? We can put them into those empty buildings that we kept talking about, the empty hotel rooms, the empty motels, the empty buildings. They're now being full, and you know what? The Center for Disease Control, CDC says, we don't want you to put them all in there because they can infect one another and it would be like a domino effect. So we have a ridiculous system and when you wanna move, it moves. So having the right person in office makes all the difference. If I were president of the United States, we would be dealing with this pandemic in a far different manner. People wanna help, businesses want to help. But when the government is not set up to really accept the help, we're not streamlined. And honestly, preparation is critical, which is why we always talk about earthquake readiness here in California and Los Angeles particularly. Really, we need to have those extra pair of running shoes and water in the car at all times for the weather, right?
Yes.
Now, I, I wanna ask this part question into you, saying you're locked everything now. So then what about the grocery stores, what about, you know, what about these places, you know, that deliver food? What about our essentials? Because I know that, you know, I talked about this with, uh, Leon and Cherie before, that when we talk lockdown, people get in their minds that everything's locked down, but there's a certain protocol of timing. And a certain amount of hours and a certain amount of things that, you know, this time and this time. So what would be your thought process on length of time and then what businesses or what businesses be open?
I would probably be very careful in how I choose essential businesses.
I love it.
When you have marijuana dispensaries, which are essential.
Yes.
And you have hardware stores that are essential, you have nurseries, I mean, as in flower nursery, right? Nursery is essential, but florist shops are not essential. It's like, wait a second, why is this essential and why is this not? I can understand medical marijuana being essential, but why is recreational med- marijuana essential? There's no rhyme or reason in the way we categorize things at this point, except where there is money and you're paying politicians into their campaign coffers, you seem to be an essential, uh, business, sort of like all the construction going on where they are in violation of the six-foot, uh, social distancing requirement, right?
Yes.
And like the supermarkets where, there's no six feet social distancing, and then it's like, finally, at least the city of Los Angeles has said, we require everyone to put on a mask.
And I laughed, Grace, I apologize, because I have people on, I don't know if you can, I probably can't see them, but they're coming on watching, even though, you know, we're gonna air later. Uh, and one of the, uh, one of our guests said, uh, weed is essential, cause it's gonna keep peace right now. So I had, I had.
Yeah, no, exactly, but you know, this is not a laughing matter, but the domestic violence has gotten out of control.
Really?
Yes, I'm hearing from both police and people who live in apartments, hearing the violence.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Well, it makes sense, I mean, you know, we're all safer at home, not everybody, not all the time. You know, where does domestic violence happen, ladies and gentlemen? In the home.
And then if he's there and now he's angry, uh, uh.
Who isn't going out of their mind right now?
Exactly, and you're frustrated, I'm sorry, that is not a good formula.
It's not.
I agree, yeah.
And we all agree on that one, I, I didn't even think about that, or something, Grace, you gave me something else to think about, because I guess because my home is just so at, at peace right now. And I forget, and I forget.
Remember, I used to be an attorney for abused and neglected children.
Yes.
It is not always good at home, not every home.
I know, I know, I know, I know. And, 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 um, thank you for, for reminding me of this and everyone else of this, because we are really not, you know, there's so many things that we're missing, this was, this is great, I'm glad. Wow, you're right, and some, for some children, it's not safe, this is not a safe environment, and you gotta remember, and also when you say domestic. Um, you know, a lot of men and women probably didn't have to, it wasn't as bad because maybe the man stayed out and watched the game and drank at, at the bar. By the time he came home, he just passed out or whatever, and then now you're stuck at home, and, cause they were telling me, I was, they were telling me, I had the radio on. Yes, radio, cause I was listening to music, and then my wife is a stickler, she'll say, well, I don't wanna watch any more TV, but then when she puts it on the radio and she is on Sirius or something, um, she's still listening. And they were talking about the pri- the, the, the liquor has went up, you know, buying, purchases. And there's a liquor stores, liquor stores, winery, the wine stores, and now the wine and spirits, all of these are making more money right now. And the guy said, well, I think, and I'm only assuming, but it's probably because people can't go to the bar. You know what I mean? And so my thought was, I'm at CVS getting my medicine and I see a guy and I'm like, I thought to myself, maybe he's secretly having a party, he's not gonna follow the rules, he's finna throw a big party, you know what I mean? And as I get ready to go out, I hear his wife say, are you sure you got enough? And he was like, I don't know how long we're gonna be locked in, and I'm thinking to myself, okay, now I get it. And he was like, I don't know how long we're gonna be locked in, and I'm thinking to myself, okay, now I get it. You know, now I get it, and even the, even the, the part about it, but how is it for you right now, Grace, with the, um, restrictions, and you're running for office?
Well, my campaign is sort of definitely on a far, far slower pace than I would like. But, you know, right now, I'm thinking of, well, what can I do to help, even though I'm not an elected? And the thoughts that came to my mind are, well, we've got young students who don't have a computer or don't have internet at home. Gotta figure out how to get that to them. Um, you know, simply asking my friends and finding some, not necessarily the latest model, but computers that we can get to the hands of young people. So I'll reach out to UTLA and see how we can make that happen.
Amazing.
Can I, can I ask you this question along those lines? Um, I know that for me, you know, I, I attend West LA College, you know, I plan on getting my business certification. Uh, one of the things that was a continuing issue was how, for instance, okay, I have internet access, but I don't have a laptop. Uh, there's a lot of schools out there like West LA, Trade Tech, all across, you could say UCLA, USC, all across the board, that when you look at how students, whether it's on the college level, adult learning level, high school, middle school, we wanna get to our education, we wanna be able to still, you know, graduate on time, if that's possible. Um, but still, like I said, there's no laptops, there's, what would you wanna do in, in your district or propose that can either allow funding, or what would you look into funding for that?
I am very aware of limited resources, but I believe when we can share our abundance with others, that's a great place to be. Uh, I'm a huge fan of Craigslist, all the free items, I can't tell you how many free items I have in my house uh, because of Craigslist, right, and other avenues like that. So I'd like us to share. So I'd like to say, hey, I know we've got students here that need these services. Please be generous, friends, you know, those of you who have more, please provide. And because I believe in the generosity of the people that I meet, that is so doable. Right? And so we'll just start there. You may have a tablet that you're, you've outgrown and you must have a computer. Well, you'll give that tablet to somebody else, and someone else will give you that laptop that you need. Um, it's not gonna be brand new, maybe it will, but most likely it won't, but these are things that will help you. And I just want us to be, I'm gonna be that facilitator. I told you how I love being the bridge builder. Uh, that's my role, and as I'll have a higher platform to work and to be useful to others, that's what I wanna do. And the other place that I see a need is gonna be in food. And honestly, for the last couple of days, I'm like thinking, what, 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 how? You know, there's this wonderful World Harvest Food Bank, a couple of blocks from my house, off of Arlington and Venice. And I was just gonna go in, but today, when I was at Tree of Life Church, one of the visiting pastors works for the food bank down in downtown LA. And you know, I'm gonna have such a wonderful time talking to the CEO, saying, okay, you have all this great food surplus. How do we get it into the southern portions of my district?
Yes.
And we'll work in other areas as well, but we're good, I see what's coming down, and I wanna be prepared. Right? We, we've got people who are healthy, who may have a truck that they're willing to come and donate. So, hey, folks, we're, we all have to work together and give what we can.
Without a doubt, it's a, it's a team effort. Uh, and with that Craigslist, is that like a free section? I want you to give some people, cause like you say, you found a lot of things on Craigslist. So we want people to be aware of this, because now, um, uh, it is that, especially, uh, uh, right now, I think the problem is gonna be it, it, things would have to be mailed without a doubt, because we're having issues with the, you know, but we're talking about moving forward. And I definitely, uh, see you are sitting, you're not sitting in weight of nothing, you're sitting, you're, you're in prepar, in preparation of everything. And already preparing and putting everything together, which is what, what, meaning that the mind and body is still at work and being prepared for your position. And that's a great thing. Um, for, for, for District Ten, for a moment, hell, I thought you were the president. I was like, got a little happy, we gonna be okay, y'all, we gonna be okay. Well, we find us, you know, but, but it, it, it's still a good thing. I'm glad you did that, though, and I'm glad I asked that question, because I got that out of you in a way, in, in a good perspective. Let me ask you guys this. The census is still going on, it just started, and, and, and that is still very important. So I wanna make sure that you guys both say what you feel about that and let people know why this is so important. And also, what I wanna address is the election itself. I don't want anybody to say what, who they favor if they don't want, and that's fine, for whatever reason. Um, but I'm assuming all of us are Democrats. I can kinda tell by the way we're, we're swayed. If Grace, if you're Republican, you're gonna shock the hell out of me, and things gonna be changed around here. Cause I'm, girl, you, you about doing your Lincoln time, you're doing good.
I've been a lifelong Democrat since I was a teenager, haven't switched parties ever, and do not see myself doing so in the future.
Who, who, who would you like to see become president, though?
He's not running. I thought, I, I think Andrew Cuomo is being an amazing governor.
Everybody's feeling him right now, everybody.
I, I really, Grace, I think you've nailed it on the head. I mean, I, I definitely have always been a lifelong Democrat. Um, and I don't have plans to change. I will say that Andrew Cuomo has really kind of what we're talking about, personality, charm, but also competence and relatable. Um, you know, and just even the shouts at his younger brother who's on CNN, I think were kind of just made them more of, of what we all are, people with families.
People with families, but the part, the sad part about that is, he probably will be our next candidate at some point. I can see him running without a doubt, but right now, we are stuck with two candidates. And those are.
My response will be, I will support whoever is our next candidate. And, uh, whatever the Democratic Party decides is gonna be our pallbearer, you know, the person who's gonna stand for all of us, I will be supporting that.
You were right in saying pallbearer right now.
A woman, but I will support the man who is gonna be our Democratic nominee.
I said, you were, you were Elizabeth Warren at first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was surprised Lizzie stepped out so quick. You know, I just kinda didn't think she would step, but I'm gonna tell you something about her, I, I think I said this to you, uh, Sheree. Lizzie's a smart ass woman.
She knows what she's doing.
Yeah, because when she stepped, she, yeah, but when she stepped, what I admired so about her is she, I, I told everybody this, though, everybody was like, well, she's gonna step out and she's gonna back Biden because her and Bernie's bumped heads. I said, she's not gonna back anyone right now. She didn't do it last time in twenty sixteen, she did not. And she's not gonna change her mind now, you know what I mean? And, and, and that's just a proven fact, because she's, whoever's gonna be the forerunner is gonna have to bring Lizzie something strong. Before she, you know, she's got some, she's got some, something to negotiate with, she's got a lot of power. So, um, it wouldn't surprise me, you know, I wouldn't be blown away if it was a Biden, uh, uh, Warren ticket.
That would be amazing, that would definitely, I mean, obviously, I've already told you I supported Warren for president.
Yeah, and, and, and let me tell you something, you guys, cause y'all hear me say Biden, 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 don't ever think I, I have something that I would not support Bernie. Anybody who wins, I've already said that too, go back, rebound, view all my tapes. I would support, I am a Democrat, as I tell people, when you're born in the South, and there's a reason I say this, I'm proud of being a Southern child. But also, when you're born in the South, they take away your choices. It was two things thrown on you from birth, you're Baptist, and you're gonna be a damn Democrat, especially if you're born African American in the South. It was just thrown on you. I didn't even meet a black Republican until I went to college, you know what I mean, honestly? But my point is, I, I kept saying Biden, and I want people to understand this, clearly understand it. Because of the state of where our country is. And I knew without a doubt that this was, that, that, that forty-five, that we did not have someone that, he had fired the head of the, of the pandemic, and he had fired the head of, of the CDC. I knew he had moved funding. I know that we don't have any of the right things in place, like Grace was saying, to protect our people. And I just wanted someone to come in already knowing where to put all these pieces, how to put these pieces, cause he, this puzzle had been torn apart for thirty-some years for Joe Biden. He could put the pieces together e- even with dementia. My only thing I had against Bernie Sanders was that you, everything you're speaking on, we need. But even Elizabeth Warren said Bernie is lazy. If you ran in twenty sixteen with Hillary Clinton, and there were two questions, how are you gonna get, what, two questions? The healthcare, free healthcare you wanna give us and free college, just give us the plan. I would have already, uh, the next four years, I'd have spent my four years putting that plan together. Hiring people, even if I didn't have the mindset, I would hire the best team. Grace, I worked, uh, I, the, the little short time I was in your office, I saw how you put everything together in such a short time, and I mean, it was put together professionally, profoundly, on point. So I'm looking at someone who's ran four years ago, was running to be the forerunner. And you still haven't done anything, and then even with this, you really don't have, can't give us a leadership conversation, just a conversation about what we're dealing with, nor about our other foreign countries. And you've had time now to bring in the best, these people love you. There are people that love Bernie Sanders. And they have all, uh, race, nationality, mindset, some of the top levels. You could have brought all these people together. Joe Biden, the whole time he was there, we were laughing at sometime him forgetting little things. Did you notice how he was bringing people together? He had conversations with each and every last one of them. You know what I mean? Every candidate, he was building a relationship with them. So my thing is, you have to build. You have to build, you have to build, not, not push away, and we don't know everything. And this is not a lazy position, forty-five should show us that. This is some hard, Obi, Obama went in there looking good. He came out looking like my grandfather, still handsome, still handsome. Clinton went in there that way. Hair beautiful, he throwing his hair back, it was full and fluffy. He came out, I'm like, I thought he was Moses and went to the mountaintop. So that, that tells you what this job would do for you. So if you are not ready for it, you understand what I'm saying? If you're not really ready or don't know, and, 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 and when you don't know, I, 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 I feel like you, you, you're not, when you're ill-prepared, and I see something in you that is ill-prepared, then I don't wanna deal, I don't wanna, you know, especially putting something like our lives on the line. You know, the main thing, our lives. If you are ill-prepared, and ill-prepared means you ran four years ago, that was my only problem with it. Elizabeth Warren has always impressed me. She's sharp, she's on point, she's a mover and a shaker. You know, Joe Biden is not a leader, I'm not ashamed to say that, everybody's not meant to lead. You're not gonna get that wonderful Obama speech, that Martin Luther King, that's gonna shake you and make you, or that, that strength that you see in Cuomo that is like, dude, like he almost told Trump, I'm gonna see you in this election over, you, you can bet I'm gonna be waiting. You know, that, that stuff you love, that strength.
You know, I wish there was a way in which the process would allow Cuomo to make it. Then I, I feel like we've won.
I've heard a lot of people say that Cuomo doesn't even realize what he's done for himself, because he's gotten so many supporters. And I, I, I'm scared, I, you know, I'm scared New York gets a lot of mobsters, and now they're gonna pull together and make sense, we know Cuomo sitting in as president. I wouldn't complain, but.
But don't you think Mr. Garcetti has also kind of stepped up for LA in a very nice way? I, 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 I have to tell you that, you know, I'm still curious about what his next steps are.
Yes, there have been many, a rumor as to what his next steps may be, but only the future will tell.
And, yeah, with him, with both of them, but with Cuomo too, and like I said, I wish, I wonder why, why, why do you guys think he'd never put his head in the ring? And I'm saying Cuomo, because now everybody, I, I, you know, but you know what, there's always a time and place, and this was his moment. You know how you have that moment? Obama's moment was when he spoke at the convention, remember? I think it was for Al Gore.
Now Cuomo may get an opportunity to speak at the convention.
Oh, he will.
But I don't, I don't know what the rules are for how to get the delegates and the superdelegates to get him the nomination. So I don't know if there's even a possibility, you know, I'm not that well-versed in DNC rules to, to know. Um, you know, I've been to my conventions, but that doesn't tell me I know how the superdelegate stuff works.
I, I think it depends on when he, when you throw your head in the ring, you know what I mean? But then again, we go back to, um, the, uh, the, the, the mayor of New York, a former mayor. Bloomberg, he, he kind of just dived in. So I think if Cuomo had the money, maybe, you know, yeah, but Bloomberg has already pushed himself behind Biden right now. But had he, that not happened, you know, cause seems like you said, Grace, money talks. BS walks.
I wonder if Bloomberg would think about fin- financing Andrew Cuomo.
I, you never know, I think businessmen have changed their mind, because he's, he's definitely already put himself behind Biden and told him whatever he needs. Um, it's his. I think what's gonna happen, though, be honest with you guys, we already set on a path, I think that Cuomo will be running again. Uh, I think Cuomo's gonna run, um, at some point, even if it's, we don't, glad I just can't, I don't even wanna fan him. You know what, and this, I don't wanna say this, but when I look at Corona and I look at forty-five, I'm torn. You know, but I gotta choose that I want this virus to go away, but we still gonna be stuck with another poisonous thing, you know what I mean? That's just my feeling. Once we get past this, can we get this person out of office? Can we? Or have we lost momentum? Uh, uh, is there still hope for us to change the dynamics?
I wanna ask, I wanna ask both Grace and, um, Sheree this question right now, in the current state, add-ons, what you say, um, Leon? Is that what would you either take away or add on to the current situation right now? With how, I would say in particular, Los Angeles, or just LA County has been working with, like I said, the current state right now, uh, how the stores are operating, how, you know, just how, how things are operating right now in time, like, what would you either add on to it? Or take away, or what hasn't been done yet?
So I'll start with this, you know, I understand uh, that not everyone is following the rules well, and keeping their social distance, but when our mayor says I want you to snitch, and that's the vocabulary word he chose I, I have a problem with that, because it isn't this idea of concern, but it's just, we don't like tattletales, snitches. And for you to use that word, that word choice of all choices, cause really, what's gonna happen is some neighbors who have ill-intents are gonna go ahead and make phone calls that are not true, because they don't like that neighbor.
Yes, you're right.
It was the phrase thing, I believe, and that's horrible. So what if you're wrong? There's no, it's like saying fire, fire, and there was no fire. And we put ours, you know, very limited resources into that.
You know, you, that is true.
Call for people to say fire, fire, when there isn't one.
Right.
And saying you're gonna give snitches awards, rewards, I'm sorry, that does not sit well with me as an attorney, knowing how there is racism and prejudice abounding, right? If you wanna get back at your neighbor for something, wow. You don't even have to be really accurate, it's just, oh, well, I thought so, that's enough, wow.
Wow.
Juan, in answer to your question, what I would like to see is the removal of politicization that I still see in LA. Um, for example, the confusion with our sheriff, Villanueva, and the supervisors, it's obvious that they are not confident and have some sort of disagreement with him. But to hear that some sheriff deputies have been ordered to quarantine, responded to that order, and then may or may not be paid for that, just, just very frustrating uh, for me as someone who may have to rely on law. Uh, for me, as someone who may have to rely on law enforcement. Uh, sheriffs do provide quite a bit of law enforcement in and around the city of LA, on our buses, different agencies, our jails. Um, and so it, to me, it's time to put the politics aside. Um, that's what we're asking at the national level, and I'd like to see that at the local level, and I'm a little disappointed with the supervisors. Who I believe have been handling the crisis quite well, with kind of continuing this political fight at a time when we all need to be pulling together. That's, that would be one thing I would like to see removed from our daily blog.
Okay, Kwan, what we gonna do now, real quick, we're gonna shake it up a little bit, move, but the census, real quick, real quick, we gotta make it quick though, because I gotta get to Kwan, I want him to tell us what's going on. Uh, quick to Kwan, not Kwan, but about wrestling, anything new going on with music, uh, Instagram, things like that? And we're gonna do our award for our IJS, uh, award, we're gonna do that IJS award, because we always celebrate people that do amazing, great things. Um, all around, so census, Grace, Sheree.
Is just absolutely critical, because it's the way government gives money to local government. It's the way we get representation. If we don't have everyone counted, we're gonna lose a member of Congress. We're gonna lose our, our power. And so we want every single person to be counted, because we can't lose out on the federal dollars that we so desperately need for the people.
Okay, so we got to make sure that, that, that people, how, uh, Sheree, they can start now, right, online, right?
Yeah.
Yes, some of you may have received even mailers or letters in your mailbox. Um, you can also, that, they will lead you to a, a site online, you might have received also a postcard. And I understand there's multiple languages that you can complete the census in. Um, and you can just make sure that you're counted, I, I was a person who was not counted in nineteen eighty, I hid from what I bought was immigration, so please, please, everybody, show up. Get counted, because it does matter.
Good deal, okay, so we're gonna get ready, uh, Kwan, let the people know some things that are going on, I do know, um. There's a few things we were talking about, I want to make sure that we touch on, uh, Dulamite has, um, released his album, he has something going on, tell the people about it.
Oh, real quick, also, before, before we jump right to that, I want to say, I want to applaud Facebook and other social media outlets for what they've done with the census. They have done a tremendous job in getting the name and getting everything out about the census. Um, definitely applaud them for that. Now, as far as, um, Dulamite's concerned, Dulamite just dropped this, um, new, um, album called Black Exhortation. Great, great album, you can find it on awesome media platforms. Um, definitely, I gotta say, please, please, support this local artist, support any local artist out there that's truly trying to do, you know, great things in their community, or just. Even try to, you know, build up their name, because, you know, hey, we love our Jay-Z, we love our Beyonce, we love, you know, Bad Bunny, Kanye West, all these things, but hey. When it comes to those artists, they had to start somewhere.
They did.
So let's start, you know, also with Dulamite, many of our other, um, independent artists out there.
For those of you who don't know, Dulamite was on one of my shows, go back and check my shows. Um, I do now have, uh, Dee, Just Saying TV on YouTube, applaud me. So you can go on YouTube, I have my own TV station there, uh, you can go and watch all my old shows, watch my new shows. This show now, all these are gonna be on YouTube, uh, without a doubt, so you can go back and watch that, okay? And, um, we have a, a young lady that was on, uh, two shows back when I first started here, blessed to start in this studio, Just Live. Please check out Just Live, her album is, the CD is amazing, it is, uh, coma, she's a, she puts me in the mind of N.D.R.E. And a little bit of, uh, who would you say, Kwan, that she reminds you of?
Um, I would say she gives me a nice blend of Emile LaRue, um, Jenei Akku. You know, a lot of different artists out there that have kind of like that smooth, sweet voice, where when you hear it, you enjoy it. And then, you know, you enjoy just the fact that you hear someone, you know, really, you know, do great music, you know, like I said, just, she comes, she. Her music, her style comes from the underground R&B vibe that's been building and building in Los Angeles for the last few years, and. You know, if you, if you know anything about, you know, at the church, or the study, or if you went to go listen to some jazz R&B live at those places. You would know what I mean, when I say she really does bring out great music like that.
And Grace, she's from that area, she's, uh, she grew up in the Limerick Park area. Um, and so she, and she was a student of the Barbara Morrison. Um, she, uh, definitely worked, uh, studied with Barbara Morrison, I think until she said she was eighteen. And so she's really, let me ask my genius something, we're gonna do the award, uh, in just one second, but I want to ask my genius something, Mike. Mike, do we have anything, uh, from, um. Do I have All Right, the song from Live, Just Live, if I don't, that's fine, but do we have it? I'm asking my genius in the back, Mike is very quiet, I normally like to pull him forward just to say hello to everybody, he has such a, a deep voice. Um, that's, uh, really showmate, but he's quiet back there, but I, I try to pull him in sometimes. So I want to see if we have it, um, just, uh, uh, All Right, because I definitely, uh, tried to send that over, because, but, because we're gonna go on to other things, we're just checking, see, but we're gonna keep talking about it, but she is a native. The song is so beautiful and uplifting, if he doesn't get it, I'll have it on the next show, but she's, uh. I'm definitely promoting the young lady, because she, her music is, is really beautiful, and it lifts your spirits and puts you in another place and time, and that's some, that's a, that's a genuine gift. You know what I mean? And so, yeah, so she's kind of really kind of somebody that I, I definitely am recommending. And, um, pushing for it, and gonna be playing the music, it was on my show, um, and if we can find it, we will. But the other thing is, if there's anyone, um, that is having questions on, uh, how to fill out their forms with the census, or how to, even online having trouble. Uh, is there any kind of advice you can give them, or they didn't receive anything in the mail, what can they do? Because I think, Sheree, you said you were not counted at one point, right? So what if somebody did, does not receive information, and they want to be counted, but they, you know, what do they, do they just have to go online as well?
I just had to unmute myself, I'm sorry.
No.
Yes.
So all they have.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, so all they have to do is just go online, right?
If, if, if they have an, well, let's assume everybody has an address, there's a way that you should be able to go on the line and, and go ahead, and even without having a link. Um, there's also a help link as well, so I would say ask for, uh, help through the link if you're able to. That is always a good way to get your, uh, make sure that you are counted.
Okay, so they're just kind of ask, because I want to make sure that everybody is counted, um, without a doubt. And that song we live is called All Right, you know, so, yeah. But I was just, uh, we, we want to make sure that, uh, everyone is counted, and that is without a doubt. So make sure, guys, please make sure that you're counted, you're counted for, and don't think something crazy, because I've had some people say. And they're worried about different things, uh, as far as being counted, or that the, the conspiracy theorists think people are up to something, and all of this, get counted, don't worry. Please make sure that you are counted, feel your, feel, feel it, go ahead.
Yeah, the census website for anyone who has questions is twentytwentycensus, spelled C-E-N-S-U-S dot gov. That's twentytwentycensus.gov.
Twentytwentycensus.gov, y'all hear her, right? So that's really cool, so Kwan, there was a battle, I'm gonna let you tell me about that battle, we're gonna call out our award, and we're gonna go out with some Live. And I want everybody to hear, they said they couldn't hear my music, but I want people to hear, uh, Live, it's all right. Michael, did I tell you again what a genius you are, and how proud I am to be working with you, and that you are working with me, with everything that you're doing, and all the other jobs that you have? Um, I appreciate everything that you do, I do, from the bottom of my heart. So Kwan, what is this battle that's going on, and how can people be, get to be a part of it, because we need a way to relax and release, so, you know.
Well, well, if you're like me, and you see my Ric Flair shirt, uh, this weekend, for those who love wrestling like me. You're watching many battles on the WWE Network, because it is wrestling weekend, and so, uh, a lot of people have been watching wrestling. A lot of people have been critical of Vince McMahon in this time, but I have to say this. When you need to escape, and you're able to watch these men and women who are coronavirus-free, who are giving their blood, sweat, tears through this opportunity. Please watch it, please support it, you know, hey, if you ever watched wrestling years, the last thing you remember watching was Hulk Hogan, or The Rock, or Stone Code, or. You know, Jake the Snake Roberts, or Ultimate Warrior. Take some time out to just do something different, and watch it on the WWE, hey, do something different, watch it, just like watching. The biggest battle that happened on Instagram recently, T-Pain versus Little John, um, it got over two hundred fifty thousand views live.
And they were, now, what were they battling, were they battling their music, the beats, or their lyrics?
They were battling their music that they either did as artists or as producers.
Wow, who won that battle?
Um, Little John won the battle.
I told you. I told you, I love T-Pain though, but I just, I, I, I just consider Little John a little bit more of a rapper, T-Pain I consider more of an entertainer, hip-hop entertainer. Um, you know what I mean?
But T-Pain gives some competition as far as production and everything, and, you know, it, it was actually, it was a great battle, and like I said, all these things have been happening recently with the battles with them. Uh, the battles with Timberland and Swiss Bees, it's just one of the things that this COVID-nineteen has done, is really brought out the arts.
Yeah, it's bringing out, because I had, uh, yeah, no one to cut you out, but Grace, you, and see, Kwan's young, I'm gonna keep throwing it up, because I'm a little pissed with it. And, 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 Sheree, you guys know, we remember, do you remember Keith Washington? The singer, good-looking Keith Washington, with his music, you know, even, I hadn't heard from him in a while, I got my show, uh, manager working, working hard to get him on the show, I probably shouldn't say that, but. They honestly did grow up, uh, next door, or with him hanging around their home, but he's doing a live concert. So I, I definitely want, my understanding, he's gonna be doing a live concert, so we're gonna keep checking out when that's gonna go down, and I'll be posting that. But he's gonna be doing a live concert, so we definitely want to hear that, because I enjoyed his music at that one point in time, he was really a good artist. What I want is, first, we're gonna do our, um. The, uh, uh, I was upset that they fired, um. The Theodore Roosevelt Aircraft Carrier Captain, I was really upset that he got fired and everything. So I really want to make sure that, um. What I thought he, what, go ahead.
And the Navy captain.
Yeah, don't worry, yeah, but, yes, they did, they also, that was today, I think, that they fired the Navy, no, yesterday, the point is, I'm trying to make, I admire, he did what was right. He did what was right, now, had he stayed silent, what do we think would have happened? So for Captain Brett E. Crozier. We salute you. And in our eyes, in this country's eyes, you are still, you, still the captain of the Theodore Roosevelt Aircraft. And we definitely want to give you our IJA Nation Award of Honor. And make sure that everybody knows that, um, you guys stood up for what was right. And, and, and the, if sometimes, the consequences. There're gonna sometimes be consequences, there are consequences for speaking up for what is right, we can go back too many years and, and see so many innocent lives lost that stood up. Um, we can, we can start with the Holocaust slavery, we go to Holocaust, all of this, people that spoke out, some of them gave their lives. And, um, we definitely, this, this world could not move or push in any positive direction with our people with hearts and strength like that. And we want to definitely make sure we let you know that we appreciate you, and we, we salute you. And guys, never stop calling out wrong, never stop speaking up for what is right, if you ever want change, you have to be like these women that you see in front of you right now, I'm not saying be them. We all saying there is a person in each one of us that, uh, that, that, that's there to shine, destined to shine. And I love Michael Jackson's song, Man in the Mirror, Woman in the Mirror, because we got to, when you make a change, you got to start with the person that you face every day. It starts with that one person, and that's all I'm saying about these two young women that are on my show. They are facing their selves, their big, bigger and greater selves, and they are making a change, because they believe in what is right and what is fair. Now, I want each one of them to give us, um. A great. A one, it's like a bow, Lena Horne was a lady, a lady knows how to exit, so I want each one of them to do, give me their Lena Horne exit, and what they want to tell you guys to inspire you. Um, because every time we leave the show, we want to do something inspiring, and then we're gonna end with Just Live letting everybody know it's gonna be all right, and, uh, Mike is gonna let it play, because we can. Because Liv was on the show and gave us the, the okay, and everything, and later tonight, I'm gonna be premiering that show that had Liv on it, Liv also sings in the choir, guys, with Kanye West. You know, he has at his church, so she's one of his choir members, yeah, she's one of his, yes, his Sunday service, she's one of his choir members. So, um, if my, um, my guy in the back, everybody send Mike love real quick, send Mike some love, say hi, Mike, bye, Mike, you love him. All right, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
So Mike, if you can, when this is over, I hope, I pray, he's gonna set, uh, that show up to premiere again, you guys catch it, it'll premiere later tonight. Um, this show will air Tuesday, okay? So now, Grace, give a people something from your heart, the woman in your mirror.
I'll say, it would be my honor and pleasure to work for you, the voter in CD ten. We have so much need in our district, I promise, I will be there for you all four years, working for the people. And you can count on me to be fair and respectful, and understanding that we want our city government to work for the people.
Beautifully said, and Grace promised them that you'll be back on, we're gonna have Grace on quite a bit, you're gonna see her face.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to joining you guys again.
Yes, because we're gonna keep on, we're gonna keep on, keep it on, till she can, we get her there, what do you want, Sheree? Sheree's, you, oh, now, girl, what you gonna do, girl?
I'm only going to say one little sentence, and that is that we have nothing to fear but fear itself. We are in a trying and difficult time, but we have warriors like Grace, who are going out there every day. And putting their, their hearts on the table, because they want to bring a better tomorrow. Let's make sure that we all have a better tomorrow, see you soon.
Kwan, give them some love, tell them something nice you would want for them to have a thought for today.
Um, I'll say this, and this is just a personal thought, whenever you think you're down, whenever you think you're not perfect. Don't think you're not perfect, because at the end of the day, we're all not perfect. We're all shaped in our own way, we're all shaped in our own ways, sizes, spirits and life. And when battles are tested like we are doing right now. Laugh, cry, smile, enjoy something.
I knew it, I was waiting on it, I was waiting on it, I was waiting. He drinking, he drinking, Grace, I can't do nothing about it, he grown, but for me, guys, all I want to do is say that it's at our darkest hour before we see the sun. You know what I mean? And, and ain't no stopping sunshine, ain't no stopping sunshine, I don't care what you do, you can, you know, you can, the clouds can get dark, but the sun is stronger. And, and we all know what, what we serve, as my mom said, I look to the hills for where my strength comes. And that's what I do, and I always will do, and I also look to the people. People like you, Grace, people like you, Sheree, people like you, Kwan, people like you, Michael, that inspire me and keep me going, and let me know that, um, I have roots. And as long as a tree have roots, it has life. And as long as though, that root, the root is there, the life will definitely go on, and that's what's important, and right now, guys, we all have roots, we just got to reach out for them. It, it just gave us a minute to, uh, nurture the trees, just gave us a minute to nurture. So guys, we're gonna get out, I send you love, Grace, to you, your mom, your family, all of your crew, tell Sylvia, everybody, I said hello. Uh, Kwan, your dad, everybody, Sheree, your beautiful children, your husband, okay, your, your father-in-law, and guys, we are gonna get out, promise me. Don't be stucky, Grace, get a glass of wine, have a glass of wine, okay, smile, I want to see that side of you, Grace is a very, very, she's not as serious, I think she's very fun. Sheree, I know, I know, I know he's strong police officer, but tell him that you have one glass of champagne, okay? Much love.
Absolutely.
Yes, Kwan, Kwan, put it down, no more tonight, put it down. Guys, put it down, damn it, put it down. Down, everybody, together, we are always stronger than we will ever be apart, okay? Let's stay together, love, miracles and blessings. I'm just saying, Mike, can I get some All Right from Just Live, from my brother, from another mother that I know has my back? Can we get it and let the people listen to it as we go out, can we let? Can we get it and let the people listen to it as we go out, can we let Grace and them hear just a little bit of it, play it for me? I see it, he's making it happen.
Everybody's alright.
Can y'all hear it?
We are alright.
Can y'all hear it?
I need to catch a break now, I gotta make a way.
Can they hear it, Mike? Can y'all hear it?
Nope.
If you can't hear it, you will hear it, um, you will hear it, when we play it, go on, um, please go on SoundCloud and look up Just Live, J-U-S-T-L-I-V-E, right now, promise me, and go to All Right. And when you watch the show, you will hear it, okay? Love you guys. Love you guys. Thank you, bye-bye. Leave me on, Mike. Yeah, Mike, take me home with it. Guys, we need it, it's all right. Beautiful show, beautiful show, Michael Farmer, everybody, Michael Farmer. Grace, you, Kwan Chandler, Sharie Annika Bentley Cole. And your host, Deion Johnson. But the magic couldn't happen without Michael Farmer. We all right, Mike, we all right. We all right. We can give him the credits.